I started the recording, so the meeting will come to order. Let's have approval of the minutes from the May 24th meeting, please.
So move.
I think you mean April 24th, right? Or no?
March.
February, March 24th.
March 24th. I'm pushing. Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes of the March 24th meeting. We have any further discussion? Hearing none. Counselor Gomez?
Aye.
Counselor Coniff?
Aye.
Counselor Wiss says aye. The mayor is supposed to be here, I think. All right. Since Corinne isn't here yet, Karen, who's our IT person, I'm gonna jump into the I'm gonna jump into the library appropriation. So, the committee knows the CPA approved this and did move to get it approved quickly because of the urgency of it. The urgency being that the ventilation in the library will be updated completely to get the kind of HEPA filtration we need, so they can open sooner. During the CPA committee meeting, they put on a couple of requirements. One was historic preservation. The historic commission reviewing the proposal by the contractor. And there was a meeting with the contractor and the commission and Nora. And they went over the entire thing and they came through and eventually said that they approved of it, and I want to share the screen. And I will show you that. Have you both received this?
Yes.
Omar, Peg?
Yeah, yeah, I see it.
Yes.
It was a very thorough meeting. They went through, there's only gonna be grates in the floor, on the first floor. And Nora, when I say all this, please stop me or correct me if I'm wrong. But also on the lower floor, we went down, I was there, and we looked at it. That is a more modern room with drop ceiling, et cetera. There will be some ventilation pipes on the walls, but none of that affects the architecture. And they did go outside and looked at that, and there's already outside mechanics that would be needed. Now Nora also provided two other we asked for two other quotes, which she did get, but those quotes, although cheaper, involved, correct me if I'm wrong, they were portable ventilation systems, which also were noisy. And this being a library, I found that unacceptable, as they did. So the library board went with the other bid. And I'm gonna see if I can find that for the committee. I'm gonna share that.
Is that the seventy-one thousand and change?
Yeah. So I gotta get to that, because I was prepared for here's the Northrop ventilation. You see this here? This is the oh, that's the wrong one, right?
That's right. It's the TJ Conway one is the one you want.
Yeah, I'm sorry. That was the one that they rejected.
Why? Were you looking for that? Can I make a question?
Sure. Ask questions with Nora.
Um, so the twenty-seven thousand two hundred, it is the amount of the project, or the library is gonna add some money to the project, or how that's gonna work? This is the amount that you need? Or you need more money, and we're gonna cover only part of it?
No, that you're, it's seventy-two thousand, no, sorry, seventy-one thousand two hundred, right?
Yes, yeah, that's the number.
And it's for the whole ventilation system? It's for the entire project?
And assume this is approved, when you guys are expecting to open the library for?
Yeah, I'm trying to confirm that with TJ Conway. What he told me originally was that he needs about four weeks lead time to order the material, and then another five to six weeks for installation. So my guess is about three months from now is when it would be done and we could be open again.
Okay.
So here's the, here's the proper TJ Conway. You can see everything they're gonna do. This figure on the bottom here, the one forty-six, that's for if they wanted to add air conditioning, right, Nora?
That's correct.
Later on, which they're not gonna do, but at least this provides them with that opportunity, should they want to do it. So they met all the requirements, given the historic preservation requirement. Given this is historic preservation money from the CPA, it had to have approval from the local historic commission. Now, the building is not permanently deed restricted, but any money coming from the CPA must be approved by our historic commission to preserve the architecture. So do we need to see anything else, committee members?
I'm okay with it.
Peg, do you have any questions?
I just have one question, Dan.
Yeah.
And it's really to you, from the CPA.
You're breaking up.
Peg, can you turn off the camera, because we can barely hear you?
Your internet isn't good.
You, you did a walk.
Try. Now I can hear you.
Okay. So you had mentioned, Dan, that when you did the walkthrough, there was a more modern room. Does that is that, does that have any implication on the amount of money that the CPA is going to grant? Does that commentary that you made about it being a more modern room have any impact on anything? Or it's, the entire building is historic, so that's how that works?
Well, the room in the basement, all I meant by that was the room in the basement, which I believe is the children's room, Nora. That has a drop ceiling and it has been renovated. There is no real architecture per se, except for the walls themselves. But the room is quite modern in the sense that there's not a lot of that. If you're upstairs, you see the beautiful ceiling and architecture. And I said that only because that's where you'll see a ventilation pipe, which is a round duct. And there's already mechanics running on the wall, I believe, or is it steam pipes and things? So that, all I meant by that was that where there is going to be some attachments to the walls for ventilation, it didn't impact any architecture. That room was quite already had mechanics in it. Upstairs, the only impact is small ventilation vents on the floor in a number of places.
Okay.
Okay.
That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Anything from you, Omar? Okay.
And by the way, I think the library do a great job in our committee.
Thank you.
Well, so the CPA did approve this unanimously, and we tried to get this done quickly. So this will go up for a public hearing next week. Nora and Marge, if you want to, you should be there, in case there's more questions.
Planning on it.
We, we know, it sounds like you have about twelve weeks of lag time, even after it's approved.
Yeah, I'm hoping, so. Hoping he's doing something.
We're hoping it passes this Wednesday, and we should be all set.
That'd be great.
So, does anybody have it up, so you can make a motion?
I will make a motion of seventy-one, seventy-one thousand two hundred from CPA funds for Emily Williston Library Ventilation System.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor to fund the library ventilation from CPA funds, seventy-one thousand two hundred, or whatever it was that you said, Omar.
Two hundred, yep.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Omar Gomez?
Aye.
Counselor Coniff?
Aye.
And Counselor Wiss says aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Corinne is here. Karen? I always pronounce your name wrong.
Yeah, I, it's long. Hello, and thank you very much for inviting me.
Well, I'm inviting you only because I'm worried, I just wanted to find out about questions that people might have, and I'm gonna pull up. This is the messaging supplemental that the mayor went through. This is the cost right here. My biggest question is, I remember Karen about ransomware and the security. Some cities are getting hit by that. And this is supposed to improve security. So can you go into how the security is being improved? Because we touched on it the last time we talked.
Yes. Well, the first, the first issue that we need to address is we have an exchange server on premise, which we need to maintain and take care of, and some of our servers are old. And there are attacks that now are targeting directly exchange servers on premise. So it's all on our capacity to support them. And, you know, one-person department, it's, it's a lot to do it well. When we go to the cloud and we are in an environment like Google or, or any of those, there are experts and teams looking at security and protecting those environments. So we kind of use that intelligence to be protected. All of our.
Do I understand that correctly? What you're saying is currently, we are responsible for the security of our servers in our building, which is, takes up a lot of time, is dangerous, whereas Google, with all of their mighty intelligence and IT people, are better equipped to secure it.
Exactly.
So you feel much more comfortable with them.
Yes. And on top of that, the city and the school are sharing equipment. And so there is not a clear oversight, complete oversight, right? Because we're so that adds to the complication of, are the patches being installed? Are things being kept to the standards that, you know, each one of us will feel comfortable? So moving to Google will give us the, that reassurance. On top of that, they have the backups. So not only that, we are protected from infection, but if anything would happen to the system, it will be easily restored. If Google goes down, they, they don't go down for too long. If something happens to one of our machines, who knows where the data goes? And who knows if our backup systems will respond? They are all two. We're running out of space. So the investment to upgrade the systems that we have will be can be done, but it could be, it will be expensive, and then it will be hard to sustain, because they will require maintenance.
Well, this sounds great. I'm assuming when this happens, we'll have new email, we'll have new meetings, no more Zoom, we'll have everything will be working through the Google system, the storage of any data, all of that. Including accounting, I guess, for Jen, all of that, or is that separate, Jen? That's not you, right?
Well, so what happened is all of our data, our email and files. So, and also to reassure you, this is a system being used by other cities. Northampton is using it, for example.
Okay.
So our calendars, our emails, our files, we also have something called the vault that we are required to have as a city. All of the emails, even if the users delete their emails, are being kept. And we can decide, are those being kept for seven years, or forever, or for two days, and what conversations? We can select the users from which we want to keep that information, that we're required, right? To hold. So there is, on top of the standard security, there is another package called the vault, that is going to retain that information. For the finance system, for the KVS, is is running on a server that we have on prem. So, you know, there are many things that we can do. So one is move the entire service to the cloud, now to a computer, to a server that is on the cloud. Maybe buy it, or change, we don't know if KVS, we, we think they don't offer a web-based client, so it will be on the web instead of on our server. So unfortunately, I can't, I can't say yet, what can we do with the KVS system? It's still on premise.
Okay, so this is gonna cover everything except our financial, but I hear, Jen, you can answer this. We're gonna move to something else that might be a little safer than an on-premise one, on-premise server?
Well, we're definitely looking into it. KVS is, the platform that we use right now, KVS is actually looking to phase that out over time, and their, their, KVS, the company is now called Springbrook. And so Springbrook is launching like a new, you know, a new program, new software. And I, actually myself and Randy, our new assessor, were on a demonstration of that one the other day, just kind of a little intro, mainly because our agreement with KVS is up in June. And I know the mayor is looking to, you know, see what else we could go to. There's been talk of Munis. You know, everybody kind of has their favorite, but KVS is definitely antiquated. And it's very, I think the word I used when I was talking to Corinne about it was clunky. It's very clunky. So we do, yes, we're looking to see what, what else is out there, but that's gonna be a cost, and, you know, obviously, I would definitely reach out and, and, you know, get her expertise on that, because I know the numbers, but I'm not the techie, so, you know.
My, my, my question regarding on-premise servers, and I assume that if we go to Munis, given what you're saying, Karen, we should get out and be having on-premise servers for financial data as well, correct?
Yes, but what I understand is that even Munis doesn't offer a cloud-based client. So in that situation, I think the best way to move forward is to move our storage into a cloud, like Amazon, or.
Okay.
And then all the data is held here. This, this environment is protected, is secure, and has backups, and we don't have to maintain equipment.
So the cloud-based storage for financial?
Right.
Okay, I got you. How about you, Peg? You have any questions?
Um, I don't think that I do. I'm, I'm I, and maybe it's in front of us, but I would be really interested in a deeper dive into this, Karen, at some point. See it in action and the screens and things of what you're doing, and I'm eager to see how, how this will all play out, but I think anything that we can do to modernize our IT infrastructure at, at the municipal level is long overdue, so I applaud you for moving forward, and I would be interested in seeing how, how this all works, how all the piece parts come together at some point.
Is there going to be a transition period where, like say, we go from one email to the other, where both emails are up, and then you'll say, you have a month to learn this new email, or something?
Well, you know, so actually, this is, this is a great conversation to have, because we need to test the system before we roll it out. So usually, the way it's done is we get the, the team that is going to pilot, and these hopefully are going to be the leaders that are going to help us move it forward. And the great thing is like, yeah, you're first, but you get a lot of attention, because we want to know what is failing, what is not working, and you get training. So, you know, if you're thinking that you may have the time to help us test and roll it out, that would be fantastic.
Well, you mean you need guinea pigs? I'm ready.
Exactly. Excellent, excellent. Excellent. Yeah, the mayor also volunteer, and I, I'm thrilled, because she has a complicated system with many people looking into her different emails and sharing folders, so that would be a good, that would be fantastic. And then, keeping both, we will keep the other ones, because we have until August, but the reality is that best practice is to say, today's the day, and close the door. Because if not, you have those users that just never get off. So it's going to be painful, and people, some people are not going to be happy, but it has to be like that.
Well, I guess that's the way it goes. Omar, do you have any questions, sir?
I do. First, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Yeah. How you pronounce your name?
Corinne.
Corinne. That's easy. Come on, that's easy. Anyways, I do have a few questions. The first one is, you said that a lot of municipalities are moving to this system now, right?
Yes.
And the reason is because it's safer?
Yes.
Okay, so what is gonna happen with all emails that we, that we have, if this new system is gonna save those emails, or in, in case someone requests public records? And is it, it gonna be a way to save those emails for one, two, three years with the new system?
Yes. Everything transfer, because we are required. So all of that history transfer. Calendars, all of that, and that's why we need to test, to make sure that everything is coming. And if, if it's not coming, what is the glitch? And because what happens to one user, we anticipate is going to happen to the rest of us. So this is why we want to first test and see how it goes. And there are many, many institutions that had moved from on-premise to Google. Google and also Microsoft, so they are the, the big two. We found that Microsoft was a little bit clunky in the city. How to synchronize, it was not an easy and friendly software for us, and it's more expensive. So this is why we're moving to Google. But there are others that use Microsoft 365. So yes, this is why we have this company helping us do this well. And we are paying for that migrator tool that is going to automate and make sure there's nothing left behind.
Corinne? Oh, sorry.
Let Omar finish it up, thanks.
I, I, he's monopolizing. Go ahead.
So on the thirty thousand seventy-eight dollars that we are possibly approving tonight, this is only one-time expense, and the next year, the cost of the services is gonna be less or the same as every year, or how, how they're gonna work with the money?
The cost is going to be the same every year, except for the four, for the six thousand dollars. So we're paying for the licenses, and.
So we're paying for this, basically, every year?
Yes. And we're paying.
This is a one-time thing?
Yes.
See what I'm circling here?
Yeah, yeah, I see that, yeah.
Yeah. Um, so yeah, it's expensive. And also.
More expensive than what we're doing now?
Right. No, 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 absolutely, because we don't have to buy a server, we don't have to buy licenses, and but yeah, that's the cost of software.
Okay, Peg, you had a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. The, the email addresses will not change. They'll still be at easthamptonma.gov, right?
Right. Yes, same.
So it's just a matter of whether we use, are we still gonna use Outlook Exchange, and that's just gonna move over to Google Workspace, or are we gonna move to a Google Workspace Exchange email system?
Yes, we're going to move to a Google platform. It's going to be the Google Workspace, where we're going to have the, the same thing that you have at home. I don't know if you have Google, the same thing, but a little bit more and better, more enhanced. So we're going to have our email, our calendar on that platform. We're going to have the ability to chat, which is great for collaboration, because you don't have to send an email, so we can chat with each other very quickly. We're going to have, to have Google Meet, to have meetings. And we can record those meetings. So it's, and, and then all the, the suite, right? Google Documents, Google Sheets, presentations, sites, there are many, many, many tools that we can use.
So will, will our Microsoft, I, I use Microsoft Word, for instance, will that just have to be translated into Google Docs? Is that what's gonna happen? Or, I mean, do I still use Word, or do we have to learn how to use Google Docs?
Well, you know, I think that will be the challenge. And to be honest, I use both. I have, I have the Office, and more and more, I'm using the Google Suite, because I'm finding it is becoming more powerful. And, you know, has, it's easy to use, it's easy to share. But once in a while, I need something, or I want to do it in Word, for whatever reason. So it's up to us, you know, it's going to be yet another price to pay. And I think this is why the training is very important, so we all get comfortable using the workspace, which is fantastic, because it allows you to work together. We can be writing a document together. We can, we can have different versions saved within each other. We don't have to have files. Everything is there. So it's, it's, it's a powerful tool, but that is going to be a transition. And for users that really need, more than Word really is Excel, for whatever reason, then we need to get like, Jen, we need to buy the Excel licenses. And now we're paying month by month those, but what we're thinking is find the users that really need to have the software, and buy a perpetual license. So we know these are users that for sure are going to need these tools.
But if I, if I send you a document, a Microsoft Word, to say Barbara, she can translate it into Google Docs like she does a PDF now. They'll be able to transfer to the, something that everybody has. In other words, if I get an email from somebody who has Microsoft Word on it, or Excel, or whatever, that doesn't, it doesn't prevent us from sending it off to Barbara or somebody else, if we.
No, and you have two options. When you're in, in Google Workspace, you can view the Word document and just view it on the browser, or you can open and convert it in a Google document. So now it becomes a Google document. And then you want to save it back as a Word document, or as a PDF, you can then save it and export it if you want, or you.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Yeah, or you just want to keep it in there, and you keep it in there and share it from there.
Okay, great. Jen, you have your hand up?
I, I just wanted to mention, in terms of Excel, um, I actually like Google Sheets, but the problem that we run into is for state and federal reporting, they require it in Excel, and when they send us spreadsheets that are protected, that we have to just fill in, they're Excel. So, you know, like, so we do have to keep the functionality of it. Um, you know, so I, I just don't want you to think I'm like, no, I'm only using Excel, because I don't want to learn Sheets, because I do know them, but, you know, the government kind of tells me what I need to submit to them, so.
So when I started in the council.
Thank you.
Uh, the word Excel didn't exist. Everything was on paper. So that wasn't that long ago. I'm not that old. It was only maybe fifteen years ago that we had everything. She had all her book. So when we went to Excel, and, oh my God, real digital data. All right, any other questions, Tom, please?
Nope.
All right, then Omar, wanna make a motion for this thirty thousand?
Yeah, we'll make a motion for thirty thousand seventy-eight dollars to migrate city messaging system to Google Workspace for government.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor for the Google Workspace appropriation. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Counselor Gomez?
Aye.
Counselor Coniff?
Aye.
Counselor Wiss says aye. Thank you. Corinne?
Thank you, thank you. I was very nervous about this, and we made it very easy. Thanks.
I mean, we, we, we like our helpers. We like everybody.
It's an important jump, but I think it's necessary. It's an important jump, but I think it's necessary and, and-
You may have to have a classroom where we all come in if we're out of COVID and we sit down with you and you show us how to use this, use each of these things. That might be necessary.
Yes. Well, I, you know, I need my guinea pigs to do that and then to help me share the wisdom. So we all can use those.
Peg and I being retired, we need things to do, so.
Perfect.
Yeah, we need, we can be guinea pigs.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I know that Peg has to run, so, uh, we're gonna move into the report. And we, Peg-
Yep.
Uh, we just got from, uh, Jen, category, um, you see all this? Category, uh, totals for you, Peg. So I have questions, but I wanna jump to Peg because she's gotta leave. This is great, Jen, by the way. I love all of this. It's just exactly what we needed. Um, what is this? This is FEMA or CARES?
That is CARES.
CARES, okay. So Peg asked her question.
Jen, can I, can I just ask the questions and then, you know, I'll watch the video for your answers? Because I might have to run, but let me just kind of package where my brain is going with this.
And tell me if you want me to move anywhere.
No, it's gonna just, I'm free-forming right now. So Jen, um, the, the CARES money is a reimbursement money for expenses that we have submitted. Is that a true statement?
No. The-
Okay, so hold that thought.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, I forgot.
No, and then I, so, so that's fine if it's a no. Um, is the FEMA money a check we got? And now we, your spreadsheet is where we have applied it, applied it?
No, it's actually-
Neither of those things are true.
It's opposite.
Oh, maybe that's what I'm thinking. Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, so, so CARES, we got a check. We applied it to certain things. Certain things are not eligible. So those are out-of-pocket expenses?
Um, for the CARES Act, it's, certain things aren't eligible for FEMA reimbursement. But that would be anything in the technology line item. And then, um, there's one other one and I can never remember it off the top of my head. But they are, so we got a hundred percent from CARES for those items. So like the technology, that all came from CARES. FEMA doesn't reimburse for technology.
Oh, so you've married the two funds?
Exactly, because it was-
One doesn't pay for, the other one does.
No, exactly. And, and CARES can cover the twenty-five percent that normally we would have to cover on a FEMA project.
Oh, that answered my question about seventy-five percent. Thank you.
Yes, yep.
Okay, so of these two spreadsheets, this will be my only question and then I'll leave. Of these two spreadsheets, is there, do they constitute any city out-of-pocket expenses that are pure out-of-pocket that we didn't get a reimbursement for?
The, the CARES spreadsheet, no. We've gotten all of the CARES money that was awarded to us for, in the first round. I don't, I'm not talking like the ARPA money or anything like that. Just the one point four million that we were awarded, we've received all and are spending it now. And if you notice in those tabs at the bottom, that shows the spend. And we have until December of this year to spend the entire one point four. We do have it like spoken for because we had to give them a budget initially.
Yep.
And you know what I mean? So like I can, as we go, you'll see that number go up and up and up. And then it's gonna get to that one point four. Um, and then, uh, I lost my train of thought.
Are you talking about these numbers here?
Uh, so yes, the, the, well, okay, so the number, the one oh nine two five five one eight five, that's the CARES money that we have officially spent to date. Okay, but then the next column, that, I did a, an if state, an if formula there. So that pulls in the, um, items that are FEMA eligible. So that shows that the reimbursement, so it's kind of hard to, to, to tell. But like the three seventy, whatever that is at the bottom, I can't read it.
Oh, I'm not big enough for you?
No, it's okay. It's, it's, that, that total is twenty-five percent. And then the total next to it where it says expected total FEMA reimbursement is the seventy-five percent. But we have not gotten a dime from FEMA. So your question being, has anything come out of pocket? It's, it's being, it's being expensed to the FEMA grant. So GL-wise, it's like, we're almost like we're carrying a deficit, which is how you're supposed to do it. That was how we were, you know, informed that it needed to be done. But the problem with FEMA is we could get it next week, we could get it next year, we could get it in four years. We, so, so there's, it's very, it's a balancing act because I'd hate for us to go through all of this. And then three years from now, say, okay, well, now of the, you know, of the one point one million that we applied for in reimbursement, um, we're getting five hundred thousand. So we're hate the rest from, you know what I mean? And that's the reason that the mayor wants to be very, um, conservative with the ARPA money.
Yep. Okay. All right, I apologize.
Go ahead, Jen.
I apologize for, I gotta run. Um, thank you, Jen.
You're welcome.
Thank you guys. Um-
Bye-bye, Peg.
I'll talk to you in a video.
I didn't hear any of that, did you guys?
I did, but it was really slow.
Karen's gonna fix all this in our new meetings.
Yes, yeah, don't laugh because it will happen to you too, right?
Yeah.
All right, so here's the big question, what you just alluded to. This one point, you see this better now, one point one three seven million that we're supposed to get? We're carrying that now because we have, we spent that money.
Yep.
And it's in a deficit account of some kind. So when the books close, this July first or whenever we close the books, we gotta cover that money. We can't go from one year to the next or the DOR allow that?
No, you can go, with FEMA, you can go from one year to the, to the next. These are both treated, uh, like grants. So it's a revolving fund where, you know, the money come, because FEMA, the way FEMA does it is I have to apply for FEMA in piecemeal. Like I can't wait and do this one point one million. I already did a hundred and nine thousand, which we're still waiting to get because FEMA is fun to deal with. But, you know, it's, it's kind of like one of those things where once we get that and then, then I can apply for the next amount. But they have limits on projects. Like if you, if you go over, I think it's a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars in a project, it becomes a large project, which requires additional reporting. So the directive that we got from our MEMA liaison was do these as multiple small projects so that it won't require the extensive reporting. Because the reports are all gonna be like the same as the CARES reports, you know what I mean? There's, there's a, an offset to it, so.
Well, what concerns me is you alluded to this. We might just get of the one point one, we might only get five hundred thousand dollars. So when we apply for these grants, is there a sense that you have that we should get the money? Or it's pretty sure you're gonna get the money, but there's no guarantee?
Yes, and, and the, to speak to that just briefly, when, when the CARES money was given to us, the original CARES application was split out and they, in that application, had a little blurb next to each category. Assumed FEMA eligible, assumed FEMA eligible, not FEMA eligible. Do you know what I mean? So, so it was clear like, okay, these are those, those categories. That was the reason why I put as much as I could in technology because that's coming off of all CARES money. And that was okay because everybody was, uh, scrambling to do online, um, learning and remote, uh, remote work and all that. So, um, it was, there was guidance from CARES on that. But then FEMA said, uh-uh, we're not gonna give you, you know, I, we don't want to reimburse this, this and this. So then CARES came out with another set of guidance in September with, you know, new, um, uh, guidelines. And, you know, the, the problem with FEMA is unfortunately, it's gonna be one of those things where we're just gonna have to wait and see. Um, because like I was on a FEMA call talking about the restrictions. And one of the questions was, so if, if you cleaned, if, if you paid to have a school disinfected, is that an eligible reimbursable expense? And the woman's answer was no. Unless it was in a specific, unless it was specifically related to, uh, possible COVID case. Well, it was all related to a possible COVID case if you wanna split hairs about it because we didn't know what we didn't know in the, in the beginning. Do you know what I mean? So it's just gonna be in making sure that we have proper documentation, which I've been on, all the department heads, they submit it to me. I get all the POs, I have to sign off on them. So it's a matter of taking all these invoices and all the POs and all the backup, stating how it's a COVID response. And as long as we have all of that and, and, you know, submit that as FEMA asks for it, we should be fine.
Okay, well, I, I, I know the mayor and you just alluded to it too, that this new American Rescue Act or plan, we're getting one point four million, um, the-
Two point nine, I thought, but.
I think it, well, I, I'm only going on what, uh, I forget them, they, they sent out a, a thing, the, uh, oh my God, I'm losing a name. Anyway, we, I saw one point four, but anyway, she wants to put that into stabilization to make sure that we have the money in case FEMA doesn't come through.
Yes.
So I understand that. And, and those funds from the American Rescue Act, they're not even distributed yet. You don't know when you're gonna get them yet.
Nope.
Well, we're just gonna keep an eye on this as we go.
Yep.
The only other question I have, and I'm, I'm looking at this line one sixty-six here, hotspots for students.
Yep.
And I noticed, maybe it was in the other FEMA, uh, one, we have some other school-related costs on the city side. And I thought, and I have questions into them, what did you spend your money on? So can you explain why we are paying for some of the school-related stuff? Is this, this is, looks like-
Well-
EIT stuff. So it's because the, the IT is together? I- in the sense of the school IT and the city IT is one organization? Is that why this is here?
Yes and no. And, and the reason I say that is when we were first given the, the, um, CARES Act, notification of the CARES Act money, this was before there was any school-specific funding for like reopening of schools and, and all of that. So the directive was that this was to be used for all city departments. And school is considered a city department, you know, for us. So, and because we were, at the time, we were sharing IT, that's how all of this fell into place. Um, and-
Some of the school stuff was paid for by CARES until they got extra money. And then they started paying for stuff like food, laptops. I think they bought a bunch of laptops, right?
Correct. Mm-hmm. Yeah, and, and the-
Karen has to fix all of them.
More stuff for Karen to fix, yep.
Well, that's interesting. If we have a new employee that needs a laptop, can I go upstairs to there and I said, I need a laptop? Because they have some going around. That's good to know.
Yeah, that would be a question specifically for the mayor. But yes, we own the laptops that they have.
Well, it doesn't matter who owns them, I-
No, no, but I mean, it was-
I was just curious.
As a shared-
There's two separate, the city and the schools, which Omar, you and I have to discuss after this is done. There was, that was the only question. I understand it now because IT is kind of together as one department. These look, all of these, from my point of view and in the other fund, um, I guess I have one other question. Let me stop sharing this and bring up the other one.
Okay.
Because I just wanted to know, you have FEMA here.
Mm-hmm.
What's the difference between these two accounting? Um, this is a hundred ninety-seven thousand. This is called FEMA through April twelfth.
Yep.
And I'm just wondering, because you have FEMA in the other, uh, spreadsheet. So what is this, what is this showing? That's another word.
Okay, so the FEMA in the other spreadsheet was showing you of all of the CARES money that we took in, based on what's already been spent and what is, um, estimated to be spent in allotted budget, you know, in, in the allotted categories. That one point one million is the total FEMA reimbursement that we should be entitled to based on which of those items in that other spreadsheet are FEMA eligible. This spreadsheet that you're looking at is actually the GL, the FEMA GL. So this is items that have already been expensed to the GL. And I did reach out to the mayor. The total on this is only like two hundred and ninety-seven thousand. But I need to-
A hundred ninety-seven.
No, 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 that, that, I'm sorry, that, it's kind of unclear, but that's the total of just that bottom.
Oh, you're adding all-
There are different GL numbers. So if you go all the way to the top, that's where the, the, the total is at the top, actually. Um, but I do need to talk to Hadal about this because it was my understanding that as department heads were putting invoices, uh, and POs through, they were, they knew the categories that were FEMA eligible. They would put on the PO like twenty-five percent CARES, seventy-five percent FEMA. And it was my understanding that that's how odd it was expensing them. I just don't know, because this one ninety-seven is not obviously seventy-five percent of what's in the, um, the CARES Act general ledger right now, um, spent. So I need to talk to Hadal to find out if Val was-
You're frozen, Jen.
Just tracking them?
Jen, you froze for a little bit, so we might have lost some of it.
Okay, am I back?
Val was just tracking them?
I, I just, I just don't, mainly what I'm saying is I need to confirm with Hadal why this account is not exactly seventy-five percent of what we've spent in eligible CARES money to date.
So this is strictly FEMA expenses that are already paid. The other one is showing FEMA expenses. Is it a duplication, the other one? Would we find these numbers in the other one?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and this is just saying, we spent this on care of FEMA money and we're still expecting reimbursement?
Right, exactly. The other number in the CARES spreadsheet is just telling you of all the, the CARES spending we did, that's the amount that we're entitled to reimbursement for, from FEMA.
Okay. Omar, do you have any questions? I am done with this.
I don't have any.
You have nothing? Well, this is perfect. Uh, it's interesting. We paid a, a nurse in Northampton. There's a lot of cooperation here. I like it. For Williston Northampton School, I mean, um, obviously this is a county-wide or at least area-wide, uh, needs are here, so good.
Yeah, there was a lot of sharing, uh, you know, which was very helpful to Bree. Um, you know, she was able to get the Northha- a, a nurse from Northampton for a specified period of time each week initially before-
To come to, to East Hampton and we pay the bill. What city PR me?
Uh, payroll.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
This is good. I, I think this is fantastic. Um, so, uh, next month, if you have any updates, the thing that I would like to know is if you are, you can get compatibility with Hadal and find out if there's anything in there that would clarify anything.
Yep.
But I think this, if anybody, mainly because you put the spreadsheet up there, we can see Northampton nurse and somebody might ask, what was that? Oh, well, we hired that nurse to come and help.
Right. Yeah, and if there's any, like, a lot of-
I don't have any of those questions. I just made a summary.
But just to let you know, in, if the council has questions- Right, but just to let you know, in if the council has questions, obviously I will answer whatever I can, but. Just know that some of the descriptions in there are like canned descriptions that were used. When audit put the um information into the system. So if if something, if like in a description doesn't make sense or whatever, just let me know because there's, there's. I can dig deeper. There's many, many.
You might wanna put the word payroll in there and then everything else is PR, for the dummies like me who. No, but it it's interesting because I think the the main thing. I think the question about how, why are we paying for some of the school stuff, that was well answered. I think that'll be a question because we have to ask them. And they got money. You said, we started paying for school stuff, but then they got some money later on.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and and that I don't really, quite frankly, I haven't. Paid a whole lot of attention to the, like, when they were given money or how much or, because I'm not, I'm not taking care of that, so.
You don't want to.
No, we don't.
Well, thank you, thank you, I think Karen again, so thank you very much. Omar, you have an issue.
What was that?
We have to discuss an issue.
Okay.
Apparently.
Thank you, Jen.
Okay, I was gonna say, can we go? I don't wanna.
And Peg knows about this because she said she wasn't gonna make the meeting. I had a long conversation with Cindy Przewinski, who's the chair of the school committee. They're upset that we're requiring quote unquote Allison and Dale to give us information. And uh, to make a long story short, we're not allowed to demand that they come to a meeting. They had the same debate with Peg and they decided that have Allison come and answer the questions for the food and the internet and all that. We'd have that, so. What they're gonna do on the twenty-eighth is apparently they get a report every three months on spending. For this kind of money CARES Act spending and they're gonna. I'm gonna, they would like Cindy and Marin, who's the chair of their finance committee on the school committee. Will come to our meeting to brief us on what they've spent. Now, I don't know what those, we won't get, I don't think, the kind of detail. That this.
And that, you you know what? That bothers me and that is really sad because uh.
Well, I don't know yet. Let's wait and see what they present.
Okay, I I.
They are swamped. I know they're swamped trying to get everything open and that was a big thing they said. I said, all we want are numbers. We're not, you know. For me, and this is just obvious to anybody, if you don't. Want to show us the numbers, then people are gonna think they're hiding something. I don't care. That's a perception that's right there. So show us the numbers and I'm gonna send these these spreadsheets. Over to Cindy and Marion and said, this is what we got from Jen. We would eventually like this whenever we could get. And the main thing for me is that staffing. If it's paid for by this new CARES Act money or any other money. In a few years, when those grants run out, what happens? That's a big question to you, and I'm gonna ask that. So. Wha- all I'm saying is, what we ended up agreeing to is Cindy and Marin would come. With that other report to our meeting on the twenty eighth. So that's where we're at, and I think we should debate what kind of numbers we expect at that point. You know what I'm saying?
Yep, I I agree.
Are you okay with that? I mean, I don't know how.
I I'm.
I mean, that's a compromise, but.
It's it's a compromise and I'm okay that they're coming to our meetings to. To give us some information about how much money they got. Or they they got from the CARES Act or anywhere else. Uh, what bothers me is, um, and I will say this to them too, is the uh. The, they, they don't wanna bring it right away, you know, that bothers me, like. You know, saying, oh, we don't have the authority to ask for it, and maybe they're right. But it's not about the the authority, it's about how transparent we wanna be with the, with, with our constituents. And I think especially this year, that the budget is gonna be cut two point five percent. Everybody deserve how much money they got from the CARES Act. And how, and how they use it. I think that, I think that's a legit question. And uh, for transparency and for for everybody to be on the same page, I think everybody should know.
Okay, well, that's my point. And seeing these line by line items that Jen's given us, that it's very enlightening. People are gonna have dumb questions, sure they are. Why did we pay the Northampton nurse? Well, we needed extra help. I mean, that's what government's all about. When you post these things. The budget or anything, you're gonna have these questions, so. I just want you to know that I'm gonna tell them that we're going to accept Cindy and Marin to come to our next meeting on the twenty eighth. To deal with this.
Yes. And and tell them the expect question from us.
Well, of course. All right.
All right.
We'll see you later. Have a good evening.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, uh, I second, uh, Councilor, Councilor Gomez.
Aye.
Councilor, this says aye. Thank you.
Say yeah.